Rocco.
Dennis Purcell. Dennis Purcell. Christina Kaufman. Jeremy Swicki. Chris Pachanka. Joe Folsom. Blair Lern. Jordan Maring. Bruce Kilby. And Kyle Van Pley as.
Public comment, for public comment at the beginning of a meeting, you will be permitted three minutes on non-agenda items only. For action items, you may speak at the podium and be permitted one minute for your comments during that agenda item. Do we have any comment on non-agenda items? Anyone online? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Curious about the spa.
Your name?
Oh, Jim Pellegrini, Swiftwater. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
It's on. It's a not omnidirectional. Anyway, I'm curious about the spa on Brookdale Road. And if there's any consideration for that traffic light that backs up pretty considerably now, and when the spa goes in, I imagine it's going to go well pants Franz Road, at least an eighth mile down, or 10 cars waiting for that thing to change. The other day, I was wonderful.
So the traffic signal is governed by PennDOT. And the applicant was required to do a traffic study which was submitted to PennDOT. And PennDOT determined that no changes needed to be made to the traffic signal.
That's like, was PennDOT aware of what's going on? I mean, you know.
Yes, yes.
And they they estimated how many cars are going to be at a day spa and yada, 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 wow, that's ridiculous. That's that can't be.
You do not have control.
No, it's not you. I'm not saying you're ridiculous. I'm saying that's ridiculous. And we discussed that.
Yeah, Ms. Pellegrini, the board does have it slated for a capital replacement for that light to convert to the MyoVision, which is the adaptive system that's that's set for 2026.
So then it'll be more dynamic.
It will be help, you know, eventually, like we were discussing, they all need to be in communications with each other to make it truly adaptive. But it does get us one step closer.
Like the three minute rules. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment? From anyone here online? Okay. I don't see any announcements or correspondence, old business. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our September 10th meeting? Okay, do I have a second, Joe? Any comment from, oh, I'm sorry.
I actually have a comment. The minutes indicated that I was at the meeting and I was not.
John was at the.
John, John Tressler was here.
Okay, so we'll make that adjustment.
Same with me. Yeah, Erica was.
Via Zoom.
Via Zoom, yeah.
Yes, okay. We'll make those adjustments. Any other comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Anyone online? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, presentation. Pocono Logistics waiver request for section of subdivision and land development ordinance SALDO 390-59D.
Good evening, members of planning commission. My name is Joseph McDonald. This is Mr. Don Polichelli. Okay.
That comes out if it comes out.
I'm good. Not accustomed to your new surroundings, but it's very impressive.
Not accustomed to your new surroundings, but it's very impressive. I'm Attorney Joseph McDonald. I represent Mr. Watanovitz, who is the principal of Pocono Logistics and has been for a good number of years at this location. There's quite a history here of the property and trying to get it to the point of getting an approved land development plan signed and recorded at the county courthouse. We were on our way there pre-COVID and the process was was interrupted and never formally completed. So in 2023, the code staff said, hey, you you need a formal recorded plan. Otherwise, we're gonna have to pursue some violations. There's been a lot of work done, I believe, and the understanding with between the township staff and my client was that we were gonna present an as-built plan that brings the property up to date in terms of any improvements that have occurred there over the years. And and that's the result, that that has resulted in this plan that's been presented for tonight. The the only issue that's in front of the planning commission tonight is we are asking for a waiver under a SALDO ordinance that would require more paving on the site. And it's it's my client's position that while that was his intention in 2017 and 2018, the conditions have changed. The use of the property is no longer as intense as it was at that time. His trucking business, as it was known at the time, doesn't even exist on that location anymore. It's tenant occupied by a less intensive business right now. And there is a lot of hard surface there, which Mr. Polichelli will be able to describe. And we're essentially asking for a waiver to avoid the need for any additional pavement. That's the issue. Thank you.
Amy, do you have a comment?
I really don't have an opinion one way or the other. My my role in this project was to review this as-built compared to the approved and development plan. And then this comment came up where this portion was not paved. So it's really just, I think it's really just the way that they're using the property now and whether the township agrees that it would be okay to leave it as asphalt.
Good.
What's that historic?
What's gonna be stored there now? Where the?
In those places.
Wouldn't you say parking for visitors or staff?
Originally, these were staff or parking for passenger vehicles and these were for trailers. However, I don't know that these were, they need to be defined by the current tenant since that's a kind of repair garage where this was always a repair garage where it was for the rest of the structure business.
And my understanding is that the current tenant is just a repair garage without the trucking component. But it's still intended for parking.
Yeah, currently it's being used as a vehicle upfitting yard for first responder type vehicles, public works, fire trucks, ambulance, police cars. Any other?
Hasn't it been the practice to require paving where we're doing parking in the township?
The ordinance does require a paved surface, which is they're asking for a waiver from that section of the ordinance.
What I'm saying, the general practice is we don't give waivers for stone parking lots.
Arnold is good at that. Example, the where Arnold was storing his cars at the oil station.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, the default is paving, and that's why we're here before you'd ask for relief for this section. It's not a public parking lot, in which case it'd be less of a request. Now, if this was, you know, a shopping center or something like that, it was gonna be used by customers. Be more inclined to have it paved, since this is a private lot, you know, used.
What are you planning on putting in there instead of paving?
There is hard pack gravel now, and it would remain as such.
And Sean, the stormwater management does accommodate if it were to be paved.
Correct.
It's not a stormwater, there's no stormwater.
No, it's if they come back and pave it in the future, the current design considers it asphalt, which is a more intensive use from a stormwater perspective.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Yeah, so you made a motion to recommend approval of the waiver. Do I have a second for that? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. You're welcome. No problem. Okay, Dr. Pachacca made the motion. Christina seconded the motion. Do I have any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Any comment from anyone online?
I'm just concerned that the business gets better. And you start using that a lot more. You know, what are the ramifications of all that?
Say they could come back in and pave it. I mean, I don't know if there's a permit required at that point, but there wouldn't be anything additional needed from a stormwater perspective.
The zoning officer was out there and did advise that a lot less work is going on compared to when it was a quote-unquote truck stop. So there is a lot less being stored there. It is a hard pack. And he did not foresee any issues with store water.
Would it increase in use and then trigger? Like, I guess what what Joe, what you're getting at is if this waiver is granted, would there be any trigger if the use increased beyond what it is now? That it would require paving, is that what you're right, okay.
No, I think that would be a personal preference of the owner property, the leasing.
Okay, but but the stormwater is still?
Yes, the stormwater was designed and built to accommodate all of the originally proposed paved area.
Okay.
That's what the site used to look like at when it was a truck stop.
I was concerned about with gravel on top of dirt and repeated driving on, especially during rainy periods. You get what we always call pumping. And the mud works its way up through the stone because it's being worked. And dirt migrates up.
Yeah, yeah, just for clarity too, all the drive aisles are asphalt. So yeah, the the entrance, the loop road, and this whole entire back area, and these parking spaces are all asphalt. So the primary drive area for the vehicles is paved.
So the only area.
The only area in question is to the, it'd be like to the upper, I guess it's the southwest corner of the site.
So we have a motion, any other comment from anyone? No, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Spirit of Swiftwater Phase Two Component 4B Planning Module.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to request a signature by the planning commission of the 4B planning module for Spirit of Swiftwater Phase Two. This is the project that you probably see on your way down 611. It's being constructed. It's almost 100% complete at this point and ready to move in, but we have to take care of these the sewer issues. It came about that typically when you do a minor subdivision, there's a planning module exemption that's sent in and gets approved by DEP. This happened, you know, back in 2017, 2018 timeframe when the the lot was subdivided off the houses, the proposed 52, the 52 apartments that are being constructed now. That was not done, and so because it's now a separate property, it's required to undergo sewage planning, and it doesn't fall into the sewage planning exemption like it typically would. Nothing's changing about the way the sewer is handled, the way it was designed and approved by the township. All the changes is the it's basically paperwork that needs to be done by DEP to get it on the books with them that this is a, like, what the sewer usage is. And because the pumping station is on a separate property, they want some assurances that there's easements and agreements between the two property owners, and that's what this planning module is for, and planning commission's responsibility is to review it from a planning aspect and Amy can help you out with answering the questions that are on there, but I just ask that you forward that on to DEP.
Yeah, so we have reviewed the planning module, our office has, and we would recommend that planning commission consider approving that, that planning module.
Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, Chris made the motion. Have a second? Dennis second? Any comment from the board?
I never saw any of the plans for that Spirit of Swiftwater.
Wasn't that part, that was part of the?
It was approved last year.
That was part of, just to, just to read, that was part of what we approved way back when the whole thing was approved.
Yeah, this is a DP permit, that's.
Yeah, it was more of a formality, this piece. All right. Public comment. Do I have any public comment? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a new plans. Members First Federal Credit Union, anyone here for that? Amy, I believe I've said this is complete for us to.
We we do recommend that the planning commission accept the plan for review.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the plan for review? Okay, Dennis made the motion. Do I have a second? Okay, Claire's second. Any comment from the board?
Yes, yes, I do have a comment. It's great to see a plan you're accepting rather than a piece of paper. This is great.
Excellent.
Thank you, whoever.
Any comment from the public? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Let's see. Mountain Edge Village Community Townhouses.
Please note that in front of your binder is a list of waivers. There. Update one, that's why it's.
Okay. I don't have one. You're gypning. Yeah.
Was it in the bed?
Okay, no, this wasn't put in.
Trying to tell me something, Chris Ann.
So you guys do have the latest, you send it over, okay.
It dated today.
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Deanna Schmoyer. I'm the engineer with D and D Engineering on the Land Development, Mountain Edge Village Community Townhouse. This is Kim Perkadani, one of the owners. So I know I was here last time, and then we didn't get to go through the waivers, so I'm back to discuss the project. If you have any questions and then go through the waivers, there's a pretty good list of waivers. This is a previously approved land development from back in, I think, the eighties, if I'm not mistaken. And they're just putting the, an extra townhouse unit that was approved before. But with building the townhouse unit, I know when they went, I think it was directly to building codes, they required then the land development to be done. So the land development required additional parking and stormwater management. So we had to submit the land development plan for approval. So that's what we're going through is basically a lot of the stuff for the land development wouldn't really be applicable to this project because it is such a small project, plus it was previously approved, so we're gonna be talking through some of the waivers. So I can go through through my letter, or if you wanna, I don't know if you had a copy of the original engineer's review letter, but I can't, I don't know how you wanna go about it.
They would want to do is go through each waiver, and then the board, then the planning commission will ask any questions, and then they can make a recommendation one way or the other.
I think my letter is in response to how yours goes, though, if you wanna, yeah, so I tried to keep it like that, so. So going off of the engineer's review letter, the first waiver was in regards to section 39029E3. It's in regards to having a survey with a boundary closure report. And this parcel is a 65-acre parcel. I don't know if you guys know where it is. It's Mountain Edge Village Community, so it is an older development, and it is a huge parcel. This property, where we're doing the townhouse unit, is over 300 feet from a boundary. Brian Courtright did do the original survey, and he did set pins when he did this. I think it was a couple of years ago he did that. And I'm using his boundary for all the design, but we're just asking for a waiver that we don't have to do the closure reports and everything on this. So like I said, we're not even near a property boundary on this. And this actually unit is in the vicinity of where it was originally approved. We did have to tweak it and pull it because now we have buffer requirements that were never in play in the eighties, late eighties. So we had a wetland in the rear, so now we had to move the the townhouse unit where it was originally supposed to be. We had to tweak it and move it a little bit further from the wetlands to maintain buffer requirements that the ordinance requires. So that was the first one that we have a waiver request for.
Yeah, so we would, we agree that due to the relatively minor disturbance of this existing large developed site, that we have, we would have no objections to that waiver.
Do I have a motion? Recommend it for Claire made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say, yeah.
Okay, Christina seconded it. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so the next one is, if you're following in engineer's review letter, it's number seven. It's section 39029J1C. And it's in regards to showing truck turning movements of a WB50 truck. As I stated, this is all the original access roads coming into this townhouse unit, which is shown on on the plans there. We made the new parking lot meet the dimensional requirements of the ordinance with the 24-foot aisles and the parking spaces and everything that way. But really, you're not gonna be getting WB50s within this community anyway. So we said something about we would post a sign that no tractor-trailers are allowed within that community out at the entrance. It's a gated community, too.
So due to the nature of this project, we would support that.
Do I have a motion to approve? I'll make motion. Chris made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, Joe, second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public?
What was that?
How can you move in if you don't have a tractor?
We, you can get, we have fire access to, we're gonna have to talk to the fire chief, but you can get a truck and you can get a moving van and stuff in there, but WDB50s tractor-trailers to get in, and they usually make you do the turn movements all the way around. I mean, you can get in, you can back out and back back into the other parking lot and get out, but I'm not gonna do a swift movement showing the whole turn radius coming around, or else we'd have a huge paved area to turn a WB50 around. They probably have to, yeah, back up and go back and forth and try to maneuver around, or you're gonna have to move some cars probably to get in and out, yeah.
But if I understand correctly, it's not currently designed.
It's not currently designed.
So.
So the rest of the area, you probably.
Have to come into play if that were to be the kid, but it's, it's not like you're asking for something that's different than what's already within that community.
Yeah, this is from the eight, late eighties, so we didn't design places like that for WB50s back then. I mean, we have access drives. I don't know what the, I think maybe 18 feet is the width of the pavement, so you know you could still get a truck down in there, but to show the full turn movements with the radiuses and stuff, we'll probably be going over and off the edge of the road, and usually they make you stay exactly within the pave width and everything. I'm not saying you can't get a truck in there. You probably, if you have to get one in there, you could. But what we're gonna do is post it so that people don't bring the trucks in too. So, but yeah, this is from an old subdivision, so we're, we're at the very end of it. We're not gonna upgrade everything of that whole area of. We're not gonna upgrade everything of that whole area of all the townhouse, you know, access drives coming in.
Any other comment? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry? Thank you.
Can I just jump in? So the next one will actually be a discussion item with the board of commissioners.
Okay, so they can't act on this then?
The, the planning commission does not do the sidewalks or the open space.
Okay.
Go directly to.
So do they wanna discuss or just skip it?
If you wanna discuss it, you can.
Um, I think it would be most effective to skip it then if, I mean, it's really, you're gonna have to talk to the board of commissioners about those.
Because of this development being an existing development, it just, it's makes it a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then the next one is number seventeen. Um, three ninety, section three ninety forty-nine A four about monuments shall, shall be set at all outbound locations where permanent monuments do not exist at the time of the perimeter survey. Um, as we stated before, this is a sixty-five acre parcel. Pins were set at, but they weren't, monuments weren't set, but pins were set on um, any of the corners adjacent to where we were uh, doing the development, they were set for anything that was missing. And I do have a, Brian Courtwright's plan is included in the plan set for the boundary, so that is part of the, the submission set.
Yes, we have no objection.
Okay, do I have a motion?
We'll make a motion.
Okay, Claire made the motion, I have a second. Christine's second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? The green squares you said? Uh, Jared?
That, that's the previously approved townhouse units from the, like eighty-nine development. So they're actually paying taxes on them, but they weren't built yet. That's what this is for, to build the one. At the edge of that parking lot, it's continued out. Uh, that building that's in the lower field had to be pushed up because of the buffer, so those two had to get pulled up, but it's only one that's being built. But yeah, so basically they've been paying on taxes on the units that haven't been built for like forever. Okay, um, next one. Sorry.
Um, any other comment? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, um, okay, the next one is comment number eighteen, which is section three ninety fifty D five, which is in regards to embankment slopes. Um, you guys have in your ordinance that you have to do a four to one slope and we had proposed three to one. It's a little uh, tighter terrain in that area to do for the stormwater basin, so we were proposing three to ones which are still stable and gonna be stabilized with uh, matting per, and we did submit a con, uh, plan to the conservation district which has been approved.
Three to one is an industry standard slope, so we have no objection.
Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Okay, I made the motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, um, the next one is comment number nineteen, which is section three ninety fifty D seven, which is, or talks about detention basins and required ten-foot top width. Um, we're doing such minor improvements, it's less than an acre of earth disturbance, um, and uh, our impervious is, I think it's like, I have it listed somewhere, but it's kinda minor. Um, it's just for like eighteen parking spaces, then the unit itself is all the, is proposed for impervious. So it's on earthen berm that is being proposed, um, with a little bit of grading for the uh, detention facility. So it's a retention infiltration berm and it's about three feet high. Um, and it, I think currently has a two-foot pond depth is what it is. So we're not gonna be driving cars across the top of the berm or anything like that, so we are proposing a five-foot berm, so we don't have to disturb more than what, what we're doing right now.
Does this have a spillway coming out of it?
Yeah, there's a, there's always a, for the hundred-year storm events and stuff, we have to put in a spillway, yes.
Okay, is it concrete?
Uh, that's gonna be one of the ones we're gonna be discussing. So this one was designed with no outflow over the spillway, the hundred-year was modeled. I mean, I do have one more revision that I gotta get back into the engineer for review, but at this point I have no water going over the hundred, uh, for the hundred-year storm event over the spillway. So we were not proposing concrete because only ways, if you go over a hundred-year storm event, that something would come out of it. I was gonna, I was proposing to do a, a permanent matting, but I'll discuss that in the next one, so.
Yeah, so we have no objection due to the very minor nature of this B M G.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Claire made the motion.
Chris second.
Chris second? Um, any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry? Next.
Okay, um, I think it's number nine. Wait, that was that one, twenty. Number twenty, which is section three ninety fifty D eight, which is uh, in regards to having a minimum grade of two percent along the bottom of the basin. We're doing infiltration, which they usually require you to do a zero percent for that, so we are asking to maintain a zero percent on the bottom.
Yes, we can.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I made the motion, Dennis second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry?
Okay, uh, number twenty-one of the comment letter is section three ninety fifty D eleven C, which is in regards to the emergency spillway, so as I stated, uh, this is a, a small facility, um, a maximum two-foot ponding for, I think it was the hundred-year storm event. And then we have the spillway place uh, above for emergency situations basically, but there's no flow going over that spillway. So really, it's zero flow unless it's over a hundred-year storm event, and then um, I know you guys require concrete for that, but we were asking to do a North American Green S C two fifty is a permanent matting. So it's still a permanent matting, but grass will grow up through it too.
Yes, we would support that waiver. Most spillways are not constructed of concrete anymore unless they're very massive uh, facilities.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Claire's second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Um, I don't know, is this one, the board wants to discuss is in regards to open space, or does this go to the? Commissioners, okay, so I'll skip that one too, okay.
Thirty-three is the next.
Is that the next, okay, yep, thirty-three, thank you. Um, so the next one, next one is uh, number thirty-three in a comment letter, it's section three sixty-five eight L, which is in regards to roof drains. Um, you guys have a requirement in the stormwater ordinance to promote overland flow where the roof drains um, are not supposed to go directly to a system, going around the building and stuff, we had discharged uh, roof drains into an inlet box, which is gonna go to the facility and be treated then too. But it's, some of them are going now overland flow, but I think there was one that's discharging into an inlet and going around um, to go to the basin.
Yeah, we have no issue with that waiver request because it is going to an infiltration facility where it will be treated.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Dennis made the motion, Joe's second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Okay, and this is the last one. Um, number thirty-seven, section three sixty-five thirteen B is uh, in regards to having calculations provided uh, per your appendix. Um, now NPDS permits and everything require the NOAA rainfall data, and that's what was utilized for the calculations for the stormwater. So instead of using what you guys have in your stormwater ordinance, the NOAA is um, rainfall data is, is pretty much what they require now.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Claire made the motion, Chris second? Any comment from the board?
Yeah, I have one, uh, has to do with our workshop uh, on this issue. Uh, is this being included in the modified ordinance so that we don't always have to get a waiver for?
Yes, this will be addressed in our ordinance revisions when. There's several of these items that are repetitive waivers that will be addressed.
Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry. Then you said you still have other adjustments to make, so it will be.
The only thing I have is, we were originally proposing to do a permeable pave and we're gonna get rid of it and just um, originally, we didn't have permeable pave, then we went to permeable pave, now we're going back away from it. So, so it's gonna go back to the original pretty much design of what it was the first time with the berm, so, but I just gotta put that together.
In that case, I believe then we'll just be tabling that, okay. I'll make a motion to table the plan, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Christine's second? Uh, any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Alright, Cranberry Creek Apartments? Anyone? Busy?
Hello again. Uh, alright, so tonight, um, for Cranberry Creek, what we're looking to do is I believe that we have a list of some uh, some waivers that we need to go through. I don't think we ever went through these, did we? Okay. Okay, uh, so you are, are all familiar with the plan, it's been before you for a year and a half, two years. Um, we're at the point where we have all of our um, permits with the exception of the sewage planning module exemption. We have the, the highway occupancy permit for the stormwater, for the water, for the sewer and for the driveway and for the uh, improvements of Bartonsville Avenue across the street. Um, we have our MPDS permit and E N S permit uh, from the conservation district and P A D E P. And we have the FEMA approval uh, for the uh, conditional letter of map revision because the, a portion of the site is in the floodplain and what we're doing is we're bringing it up to be two feet above the, the floodplain elevation.
Just to confirm, you're, we're looking at your letter dated September twenty-sixth?
Yes, that's, that's correct. Now, there are two waivers that uh, because of the nature of uh, of them, we no longer need, so we're gonna skip over the two of them. So I'll start going through these now, I guess. Uh, the first is section three ninety twenty-nine K, uh, community impact analysis uh, is required. Uh, if there's anything more than fifteen dwelling units. Um, our justification is the, the project proposes two-bedroom and one-bedroom apartments that attract a few families with children, uh, and therefore have a positive uh, fiscal impact on the community. Additionally, the, the restaurant will have a positive impact on the community as they offer new jobs and will generate additional tax revenue for the township. Uh, Monroe County Comprehensive Plan also states that the apartments are in short supply and more are needed specifically along the six-eleven corridor. Um, the, the, there's a serious need for apartments, which is probably why you see so many um, apartments coming before the board at this point in time. Preparation of a community fiscal impact analysis requires large amounts of data to be collected from the township, county and state. And the result of the analysis will have no impact on the design as basically the pro, the, the use is approved and permitted by right. Um, so you know, we can go through and do a full financial analysis on this and um, it can be built anyway, you know, even if it was a completely negative um, fiscal impact analysis, but um, like I said, the, in, the proposed improvements are inherently positive, uh, and will have a positive uh, impact on the community as a whole. And we're also, um, as you can see, we're ta, we're taking what used to be or what is currently a uh, defunct go-kart slash amusement park and we're improving it to, to have uh, three brand-new buildings with a hundred and fifty new apartments and a restaurant.
Since it's not an engineering matter, we don't have an opinion on it.
Lisa, could, could you speak to generally the community impact analysis and, and your understanding of, you know, if it aligns with the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan with that kind of be in line with what we're trying to do in the county? Cause I just thought, I wanna, I mean, I, I understand what you're, you're saying, but this must be in our ordinance for a reason. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, we, we are fully evaluating.
Sure, uh, this particular provision uh, of the ordinance um, is a requirement, especially when you're dealing with uses that may, you know, are very large scale and may have a, a larger negative impact on, on the surrounding area. Here we have a situation where the use is permitted by right, so if we've already us indicated, yes, this is a place where we would want this type of use. Um, so that this in and of itself is, is not a use that I think the township deems as being one that they would wanna see how is it gonna impact the, the surrounding uh, properties of the township, this particular corridor. It's permitted here, so I think we can assume that the township's already evaluated it. And I think um, it has been spoken to before that the, this particular use I think has been evaluated by the Monroe County Planning Commission um, as something that is needed i- in, in Monroe County, so I don't think from that perspective um, it is out of line with the, the county's uh, wishes or even our, our comprehensive plan, because again, we, we have zoned for it. So from that perspective, um, I don't think from that it, there'd be an issue with granting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that explanation. Do I have a motion to, well, do I have a motion, let me start that? Claire made the motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, Joe's second, okay? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public?
Um, Charles Kepler, resident. Uh, the people of Pocono Township are deeply concerned about the pace and scale of development we've been seeing all over Pocono Township. I think it's the least this body could do to make these, make these developers perform their community impact surveys. If for nothing else, then so that the community can understand what, you know, what this going, what this is going to mean for them, the people around the property, even if it's permitted by right. I think homeowners who live in the vicinity of these properties that are being developed upon should get this impact survey so that they can understand, you know, what, what this will mean for their lives going forward. Um, especially, you know, a large apartment complex like this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There are no homes anywhere near this property. It's a, a, a commercial corridor, there's a car dealership across the street and Route eighty is behind it. And it's separated from Route eighty by two very large streams, it's a twenty-four acre property, we're disturbing nine acres of it and it's the area that's within, that's already been cleared. Um, so there's no additional trees being cleared and we are proposing hundreds of new trees as landscaping, so.
Mister President, this is something that was accepted with the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan as a needed item for Pocono Township.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next.
Next is one planting island shall be provided for every ten stalls. Uh, a waiver is requested uh to not include landscaping every fifteen spaces. Um, so these are the interior parking islands that we provide um islands uh like uh planting strips in between the parking areas. Uh, I'm gonna move over to uh the plan so I could point it out to you. Okay. So we do provide a significant amount of landscaping uh in these islands that run parallel with the parking areas there, there, and there. And we have a lot of plantings proposed in here, over here, here. Um, these planting islands are the ones that, you know, would come out into they would project out into the parking area. And um our major issue with it is it makes plowing and and maintenance of the the snow very difficult uh because the plows are constantly hitting the the curb line um for that. So and it would also take up parking areas that we need in order to uh to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the uh for the parking.
What you're in, you're asking for? One every ten parking stalls?
Uh, so I think the ordinance, like it's there, it says at a minimum every fifteen spaces. But on average, I think it's one in every ten. Um, so we we do provide uh one island here and you can see, you know, we have eighteen spaces instead of fifteen here in a row without a parking island and eighteen or nineteen here. So, you know, it it the the parking is uh broken up significantly with um eight foot wide minimum um parking strips that will have trees and shrubs uh, you know, significant significant amount of plantings um in them. So we feel that that at a and we we have planting strips uh planting islands also separating the parking lots from the driveway through the property. We just don't have them in on the interior of these three big uh bigger parking lots.
So they're on the outside and and.
Yeah, we bumped them to the outside, exactly. And in between lon- longitudinally along the parking area.
So I would say is, I mean, fifteen is a subjective number. I don't know who decided fifteen would be the magic number, so um it's there's no science behind that that I'm aware of and, you know, we would definitely agree that it does create some plowing issues when you have a parking lot of that size, and they are providing a lot of landscaping in this project in other locations. And the the parking lot is broken up, as Sal indicated, with those long strips which are all landscaped.
Yeah, so it won't look like a like a Lowe's parking lot where you have parking space and they could do a pull-through. We have we have it broken up, so you got a drive aisle, parking on either side of the drive aisle. And then on either side of those part those parking spots is a uh vegetated strip.
Make a motion. You made a motion. Do I have a second? Christine's second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? Go ahead.
Uh, it's what's the target price on the uh the units, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? Is that a valid question to ask?
I don't know that they've figured that part out yet.
I can't answer that question.
Not section eight?
No.
Okay. So it's regular, right?
No, these are gonna be higher end.
Higher end.
I'm not sure the exact price range. I couldn't.
Any other comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, uh, the next is section three ninety fifty-five F three A and three ninety fifty-five F three C. Um, property lines shall have uh the and right-of-way buffers shall be required for the following types of development. All non-residential development and multi-victus, so it's requirement for buffers um along the right-of-way. Uh, waivers requested for less than the required trees in the front right-of-way parking buffer along six eleven, which would be uh forty-four evergreens, eighteen ornamental trees, and eighteen canopy trees uh to prevent the use um of existing healthy woodlands as an equivalent to the buffer tree plantings along the side and rear property lines. And uh substitute for part or all of the required plantings with with the uh, I'm I'm sorry, I skipped the line. As is permitted by three ninety fifty-five F three G, which states existing healthy tree shrubs or woodlands may be substituted for part or all of the required plants with the approval of the township. The minimum quantities and or visual effect of the existing vegetation should be equal to or exceed that of of the required buffer as determined by the township. Now, we did provide uh some photos in our submission of the um the front or not the front, but the rear and side property boundaries and, you know, anyone that's driven by uh this knows that the there's a significant amount of trees. You can't even see Route eighty behind it. Um, those are the trees that will be maintained and um those are the areas that we're using for. It's a great, great area there. So those trees are being maintained. We're actually expanding on that uh for the riparian buffer. We're planting um two hundred and ninety-three trees, two hundred and forty-seven shrubs in the riparian buffer. And um additionally, um so we we don't quite meet the requirements in the on the front. But within that buffer, we do provide five red maples, three willow oaks, five white oaks, five tulip poplars, one spice bush, and two red choke berries. Uh, additionally, between six eleven and the parking areas. Uh, but outside the of the thirty-foot buffer area, an additional six willow oaks, one red pine, one black cherry, seven white oaks, one pop- tulip poplar, five red choke berries, seven spice bushes, and six common junipers uh are proposed. Uh, majority of the sites, ninety-four um proposed ninety-four deciduous trees, twenty-one ornamental, nine evergreen, fifty-eight deciduous shrubs, and fifty-seven evergreen shrubs are proposed between the building and the and the road. So we have a significant amount of planting. It's just we can't fit it all on that front buffer. It's just i- it it won't fit there. Um, so we provided a significant amount of plantings and uh we have more than uh adequate side and rear lot buffers. Uh, we're just asking for the ability to use the um the trees as the uh buffer requirement for the side and rear and the ability to have lower than the amount within the actual thirty-foot buffer.
What are the sides, the height of these trees that you're gonna be planting?
Uh, I believe they have the the deciduous trees have to be eight feet tall and the evergreens are six feet tall.
That's at time of planting.
What's that?
That's at the time of planting.
But that's uh the 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 riparian buffer are are smaller, and that's another waiver that's subsequent here, but I'll explain that later.
Yeah, we have no issue with the requests.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Claire made the motion. Joe second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public?
Charles Kepler, resident. Um, the people of Pocono Township are deeply concerned about preserving the rural quality of the Poconos. Um, the purpose of these bu- uh buffer trees and shrubs along the front of the property is so that well, people driving by are looking at trees, you know, the reason they moved out here to to be in nature, to be out, you know, in the woods. Um, not having the buffer means that, well, people are going to have to look at these apartments every day when they drive by them when, you know, before well, right now it's an empty lot, but I'm sure they prefer to be looking at trees. You know, we should we should want to, again, preserve that rural quality of the Poconos. That's why people come here. That's why people decide to vacation here, because it's beautiful and we have a lot of trees. We should want to try to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We agree that uh trees are important, which is why we're proposing to plant so many.
This is months ago when he first did this. Um, and there's a restaurant there. And then they, I said this was months ago, if I remember, it's the same project. And there's a restaurant in the front. And they said they didn't want trees in front of the restaurant because it was gonna block the signage or something. Is that still the case?
That didn't sound like it was the case.
The the reason we're asking for the waiver is for the uh not having the uh amount of trees required in the thirty-foot.
Okay, but what about from street level up? There's a restaurant, right?
There'll be a restaurant.
Yeah, and then there was something about the trees not being in front of the restaurant, is it?
Well, the the evergreen trees would block the the view.
Yeah, they would.
They would.
So they're not going in?
There are some evergreen trees proposed.
Okay, fair.
Not the required amount.
Sal, do you have a landscape plan that we could put up on that?
I don't have one here, one printed out large scale here. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, uh, the next one is uh what I was alluding to before. Um, is the the size of the the trees and shrubs that are being planted. Now, for all the trees and shrubs that are being planted in and around the buildings, in front of the buildings and the parking lots, those are all gonna comply with the requirements of your ordinance. The uh the trees, however, that are proposed.
Which one? Number?
Yeah, uh, this is section three ninety fifty-five G. And so the waiver is to allow for the trees and shrubs planted in the riparian buffer. So this is a requirement that uh this is actually not a requirement of the township ordinance, but something that we've taken upon ourselves to do to improve stormwater uh and to improve the uh the health of Cranberry Creek uh stream behind it. Um, is we're proposing to plant uh, I have the numbers here. Two hundred and ninety-three trees and two hundred and forty-seven shrubs along the riparian buffer. Um, but these uh trees and shrubs will be smaller than the required amount of, you know, the eight eight-foot tall trees. Uh, and then the main purpose behind this is when you're doing riparian uh buffer plantings, uh you kinda wanna plant you're planting all native trees and shrubs and 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 different vegetation in there. And what you want is to see what's gonna grow best. And so uh you kinda overplant it. You know, you're putting these things every every ten feet. You're putting a new tree and a new shrub and you wanna see what's gonna grow best. And basically, you wanna allow for the trees to grow up and then the ones that don't survive uh, you know, get overtaken by uh, you know, some of the other shrubs that are planted and you you want it to grow organically and naturally so that um, you know, of all these native shrubs and trees that are planted, the ones that are most suited towards growing there, grow there. And so you uh you can see on the Post Construction Storm Management Plan, we have a multitude of of different plants proposed there, but you want them to grow from from sapling size in order to uh to promote the growing of trees that will actually grow there naturally.
And Sal, the planting of the riparian buffers follows the guidance on such plantings.
Right, it's. Yeah.
This is this is published guidance on how you reestablish the buffer.
Yeah, the DEP has requirements in their in their ordinance or not in their uh manuals that does this exact thing, which is why it was approved by the Conservation District.
So we're supportive of the the plant, the waiver to the plant sizes in the riparian buffer restoration area.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Second.
Chris made the motion. Chair of second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, the next one on sheet three is, we can skip over.
That was three ninety fifty-seven C?
Correct. Yeah, because we're restoring the the wetland area, so we don't need to ask for a waiver for that. The next one, uh, parking space and aisle dimensions shall be no less than those listed in the following table. Parking width of ten feet required for ninety-degree angle parking. Uh, waiver is requested uh to reduce the width to nine feet, which is already permitted in your zoning ordinance, uh but the the Sal though just has a a higher number in it.
Yes, and this is a waiver that is quite often requested and granted because of that conflict.
And to Bruce's point, I'm sure he's gonna ask the question that's part of the.
Yes, that is being brought up in the remarks.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Do I have a motion?
I make.
Okay, Joe made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Claire's second. Any comment from the board?
Yeah, I I'll.
Oh, go ahead.
You wanna make the width nine feet on the parking spaces, what you're saying?
Yes.
Instead of the ten feet?
Correct.
In our ordinance, in our ordinance, we have that nine feet?
So we have in zoning, it allows for a nine-foot, and in Sal, though, it requires a ten-foot.
I I go with the ten-foot because you know what? Nine-foot, you're banging doors. You're parking one next to one another. You're banging doors. You go out in some of these parking spots now and you can't open your door with somebody parked next to you. I have a problem with that. Uh, yeah, I can't go with nine-foot. That's just, you know. That's my, that's my thing.
So nine-foot is a pretty standard width. Uh, it's in most of the ordinances that I have seen. Um, and, you know, if you go to Lowe's, Target, they all have nine-foot widths.
Yeah, you can't open your doors. You know, the cars ain't small anymore. The cars are getting bigger and bigger again. And we should be having twelve-foot spaces, not not pet nine-foot.
Not the you know, look over anything. Just what Dennis is saying, I'll say it on his behalf. He has trouble moving and getting around, and when you only have a nine-foot spot, it's very difficult to get out. I've gone through when I had my knees replaced, happened to use walkers and crutches. You just can't get out and do it. That's my problem with it. So I've been there also.
I'm done.
So I guess maybe in your plan, can you?
Well, the 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 issue, the issue with that is there's within the area of disturbance, which we're trying to keep inside of the cleared area, the area that's already been cleared uh for the previous development um in order to stay within that and meet the parking demands. We need the nine-foot the nine-foot width to to reduce the size, and it also reduces the stormwater generation. Uh, it improves, you know, the the amount of runoff that's coming off the site and affecting our streams. Um, so uh, we feel, you know, I I do understand, I do understand your play and and sympathize with you. I I believe the overall benefit of this would be um to have the smaller, smaller width, but that that's up to you guys to judge.
Have you given any thought to and looking at the drawing? There's a tennis courts or pickleball courts. I'm turning that into parking? So you can comply with the ordinances?
Uh, the the cars wouldn't be able to get behind the buildings. And then in order to get that, get back there, we'd have to add pavement and parking aisles. Um, which again, would be detrimental to the to the stream behind it.
We did have, we had a moat, right? Okay, and this was in the comment part. Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Well, and it's it is something that is permitted by your zoning ordinance, so um the conflict usually goes to the the developer. Tie goes to the slider, yeah, to the tie goes to the back.
Understood. Any comment from the public?
Yes, okay.
Question? Sure.
Jared might know this. How wide are the spaces out here?
Pardon?
How wide are the spaces out here?
Out here?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
Jerry, do you know? Okay, so if I heard him correctly, he wants to go from ten feet to nine feet so they could meet the requirements of how many cars he needs in the lots, yet that's gonna cut down on runoff? Like, that's what I thought you said.
You need more paving, so you need more impervious surface if you do wider spots.
But you can't increase the amount of surface you're using just decrease the amount of cars that could fit in it. Is that, am I incorrect? He can't, he can't meet the amount he would need to put more and redesign the the lots as it stands right now. If it was ten feet.
It's still, nine feet is permitted.
Right.
It's allowed.
Fair enough.
Well, basically, at this point already.
Yes.
So there's any cat parking lot for already on the site?
Yes, there is.
So those spaces are already wider for people who have.
Yeah, there's van-accessible spots at each of the buildings.
How many spaces?
With the, with those with ADA, with the, with ADA plates, yeah. Correct, and we have, I think, one more space than is required by the, by the ADA law. I'm not sure what that number is off the top of my head, but it's, I think it's usually one for every twenty-five spaces, so.
Yeah, we did check that when we were.
So it's at least twelve, twelve spaces, is my math right?
What, whatever you prefer?
Dennis Purcell? How do you vote? Christina Kaufman? Jeremy Swicki?
Yes.
Ms. Bishaka? Joe Folsom? Blair Lern? Jordan Mary? Risky Elby?
I'm the alternate.
Yeah, motion passes.
In order for brevity, the next one you just approved, that's for roof drains being connected, uh. Directly into a, a, a post-construction storm or management facility, uh, which this is. Um, instead of being discharged above ground.
Do I have a motion? Hey, Christina made the motion, do I have a second? Blair, second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried?
Alright, the next one can be skipped, uh, that's the same. For the same reason as the last one. And then the last one for tonight is three sixty-five thirteen B. All calculation, this is for the, this is one you just approved, also N O A, A, Atlas fourteen.
So we, of course, we have support.
Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, Claire made the motion, do I have a second? Christina? Second, okay. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Oh, does someone have a comment? Oh, okay. Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried?
And then, uh, I'm not sure if it's on, on the table for tonight, but uh, we'd be looking for. Um, conditional preliminary and final land development approval.
Yes, the remaining comments in our letter can be addressed through the conditional process there. Sewerage planning is your, your major.
It's T and M's letter dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Yes, correct.
And it's, everything here will comply or has already been?
Everything's will comply or?
Alright.
With waiver request that you used to recommend.
Do I have a motion to recommend. Approval of the Cranberry Creek Apartments Land Development Plan. Um, pending T and M's letter dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Claire made the motion, do I have a second? Christine, a second? Any comment from the board?
Um, I do have a outstanding email from the fire company, I'm out to you for, I think it was four different questions.
Yeah, actually, we did, we did address those, um, we added a, a fire hydrant and we moved those locations into the uh. The parking islands, um, so that they're closer to the building with, uh. In and around a hundred feet, which was a, one of the, one of the comments.
Yeah.
Um, we do have a truck turning radius uh, provided in the, um. Uh, in the plan set that we submitted to the township, um, we can get those over to uh, to the fire chief so that he can take a look at that and make sure.
If you don't mind just sending those over so we can have it in the fire company file.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Lot one trap hotel and retail.
We just issued our first comment review letter on that project. That was issued on October eighth.
Logan? Alright, uh, so. No action to be taken tonight, uh, really, we're just here to present the plan. Um, so that you become familiar with it, so that at the next meeting, when we look for the waiver requests and the uh. Potentially approval, hopefully approval of the plan, um, you'll be familiar with it and uh. Hopefully you don't have any, any like major planning questions. So, uh, the project is, uh, proposed to be a one hundred and ten-room hotel. Uh, dual-brand hotel is, is what's uh, what's being hoped for and a seventy-two-hundred square foot. Retail uh, building, uh, two stories. Uh, this project is behind the, the Sheets, the existing Sheets property. Um, it was previously approved as a land development for a medical office building. Um, and actually, if you go out there, you'll see that the pad is mostly built for. The medic, medical office building, it's all graded out, the storm, the underground stormwater basin is in. Um, but since we're changing the use and we had to add some parking areas and some impervious coverage. Uh, to facilitate the different use, uh, we had to add. Some stormwater improvements and, you know, the grading changed, the building location changed. Um, so we are coming in seeking revised final uh, approval of uh, this previously approved plan. For the uh, for the new use.
So you said revised final for this?
Uh, revised final, right.
I have a question for Amy. It says, uh, on your review that it's a hundred-room hotel. If you go to comment thirty-eight, it says a hundred and ten-room hotel.
Hundred and ten is correct.
Okay, so the.
It's just a typo, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So do I have a motion to approve the revised final, right?
Uh, what was previously approved or what do you mean?
What do you plan on putting in now?
We plan on putting in a dual-brand hotel.
Right.
Of which one of the dual brands will be an extended stay. We have people that come into the community that would like a bedroom with two double beds and a small kitchenette. Which, which you can then have a short extended stay with a small family of a couple of people. So they could stay two or three days rather than one or two.
Okay, you know, and you're gonna have a retail building in there also, retail?
On the one side of it, yes, sir.
Okay, and what's gonna be, what, do you know what's gonna be in there?
Figured that one out, yeah.
It's not gonna be any kind of childcare center, right?
Any kind of what?
Childcare center? Daycare center?
No, no.
Okay.
Although we were approved to do that.
Yeah, with an emergency road. Now, don't forget the emergency road.
That's right, that was the how it worked. Yes. No longer that, no.
Okay.
That's ancient history, the daycare center.
My only comment, our deadlines.
Uh, yeah, we, we can grant an extension.
Yes, based on the representation that we're getting an extension.
Any comment from the board? Public comment?
My house is within walking distance of this stuff. Is there gonna be any blasting? We did, you did for sheets.
Yeah, majority of the site work has already been completed to this point, like I said, the, the pad's already built out. Um, the area where the hotel is, is. Um, is mostly stockpile area at this point in time, so, uh, no, I don't think there's gonna be any, any blasting required.
I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen, but right now, we're not planning to do any of that.
How does this play in with the townhomes? Excuse me?
How does this play with the townhomes?
Play into it at all, the separate, whole other lot, separate thing.
Okay. Just wanna know if there's gonna be blasting.
It's not, it's not anticipated at this time. But you never, you, you never know, there, there is bedrock there. What's that?
Would there be a waiver needed for blasting?
No, the blasting's covered through a separate permitting process during construction.
Would that be up for any kind of debate or no?
That's the state, the state governs that.
I came tonight to answer any questions that you may have about what we're trying to do.
You're building a hotel.
Well, the Swiftwater has become pretty successful and this, the price point for the Swiftwaters a little high.
Right.
These will be lower. To answer that question that you may have.
Okay.
Brands that you mentioned?
All in favor?
We didn't mention any brand.
You mentioned two brands of hotels that you wanted to do extended stay in one of.
Extended stay would be any brand.
I know, I know, okay, I got you. That's not the name of it?
No.
That's the type.
That's a type.
Alright, so. I am going to make a motion to table. The one thirty-five Warner Road J Bar Pocono LLC and Alaska Pete's Roadhouse Grill, do I have a second? Blair, second? Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried? Okay. And then. Do we have a joint work session scheduled or is that still? Oh, is it for October twenty-seventh?
Yeah, five P M.
So that's our second Monday?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Alright.
That's for dinner.
Sausage and peppers.
What times to start?
Five o'clock. So I'm sorry, uh, Mike's making big Z D instead, Joe. The one in November will be sausage and peppers.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? For a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you everyone.
For our don't Santana banana, we thank you very much.